I will ask our invocation followed by the pledge, so if you would just bow with me. Our heavenly father, we come to you, thanking you so much for this beautiful world that you've created. Lord, we ask you continue to guide us in the way that you would have us to go, to help those you would help us ask us to help. The Lord, conduct your plan as extended as you would do it. Lord, we just ask you to continue to hold our hand as we go forward in this district, Lord, in the decisions that we have to make behalf of the children. That you'll continue to guide us with the knowledge that only you can impart in us. Lord, we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Alright, so let me go ahead, can everyone see the flag?
I think it's there.
Can everyone see the flag there?
Yep.
Alright, so attention, so we, okay, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the covenant, to the one nation, and to the freedom, the liberty, the power.
Alright, now, looking at our agenda for tonight, I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cops, do I have a second? Has been seconded by Ms. Young, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, we'll do it by voice, vote, Ms. Cops, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Sheemake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Spark, are you on with us? Okay, I vote yes, Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous, four of them. Now we go to our school board minutes for December the second, December the seventh, and December the eleventh meeting. Any motion to approve the minutes?
I say no.
Uh, that has been motioned by Ms. Cops, who was the second?
Uh, Sheemake.
Okay, Dr. Sheemake made the second, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all are faithfully signify by voice vote, Ms. Cops, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Sheemake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Spark, how do you vote? I vote yes, uh, Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, it's four of them, it is unanimous. Next, we go to our trustee travel and discussion, board, is there any travel to report? Okay. Now we go to our discussion.
Is anybody else getting interference?
I am, yes.
Yes, I am too. I am, now I stopped.
Alright, um, so next we go to our discussion in consideration of capital improvement plan for the CMSD. Uh, this is centered around our efforts to, um, start capital improvements across the district that we'd identified that need to be done. Did everyone receive their email earlier today of the recommended, uh, recommendations for, um, some of those capital improvement projects?
Yes, that priority list.
The priority list, that's correct, so. Alright, so I will tell you, the list as it is put together here. We have the intercom system for the high school, which looks like there's a couple of add-ons, seven hundred forty-six dollars and a hundred twenty-five dollars. Let me see if I can. Alright, now can everyone see this?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so as you can see here, the security sys, I mean, the intercom system at the high school, uh, the base price plus the two additional add-ons, uh, seven forty-six for the radio module and a hundred twenty-five dollar integration to P A system. So that comes out in the total about a hundred forty thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, do I, let's see, who is the, who, Dr. Labott, who is, uh, the person that if the board approves, this would be awarded to?
I would have that deferred to Mr. Little, and that I don't have a quote in front of me, but, uh, I did want to say that as we look at these, who was doing, who was doing the bid, this, it was selected based on Mr. Little's research and finding the lowest best bid and what we needed to get done as far as the scope of work, and that was our initial reason for the order of each of the, um, I mean, for the, um, each, each scope of work.
Okay, so is Mr. Little on with us?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on.
Hey, Mr. Little, how are you this evening?
I'm alright, how you doing?
I'm still breathing, so the Lord's good. So, uh, if you could, who is the company being proposed here that we select to do this, uh, project?
It is, uh, Smart Security Technology.
Okay, I was just making sure that wasn't just a, you know, general category or something.
That's who it is.
Alright, alright, so, um, so board, what we'll do is we'll go through these and then if the board wishes to, then we could take them all up or take some of them up once we get to the end, okay?
Okay.
Next, we have pressure wash at Franklin, uh, two vets pressure washing, um, lowest bidder twenty-six fifty there. Next, we have playground equipment, uh, for sale, uh, elementary, uh, Wonder Works Incorporated, and this is some of the equipment that we saw that's on the backside of, uh, sale to be replaced. Uh, come down to the next with number four. You can see playground equipment for Franklin, I think there were some, uh, dangerous parts that might, uh, that was missing and, uh, for students that might be able to get on it, and that's also for Wonder Works for a total of twenty-five thousand nine ninety-seven. Uh, cameras, uh, for the Columbus Middle School, misty alarm, and this would be all the cameras on the outside, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it would feed into the central part of the schools, or?
What do you mean feed in?
Well, I mean, how would they be monitored?
Um, this is the cameras on the outside, so you want to detail?
It's, uh, they will have the monitors are inside the school, right outside of the office where the cameras, where the inside of the school are, they're right there.
So what I'm saying is that you would be able to go back just a camera, that it works inside the school, if something were occurring, you could go back.
Yes. You'd be able to back there and see what goes on.
Alright, then we have the parking lot at Cook, uh, it's Cook Development LLC is the lowest bidder, and this is the part that's kind of blocked off out in the front of the school right now with the concrete that had kind of collapsed or cratered, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, parking lot at C H S Cook Development, um, is this the one that's on the backside over by the old call bell?
Yeah, by the old west office.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, alright, and you see the price there for thirteen thousand, uh, pressure wash at Fairview Phase Two, pressure washing sixteen hundred. Uh, Phase Two, can you explain that? Oh, that's the company there, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, woodwork at Franklin, Jay Morgan Company LLC, ten thousand six hundred dollars minimum for fifty feet, and we don't have any idea what the total amount of foot it would be?
Uh, no, sir, not till they, uh, this, this one was kind of hard to bid, um, because, you know, you really don't know what you're getting into until you get up there, but that was the minimum for fifty feet, and then it would be two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for every ten feet after that.
And I think that Mr. Little detailed this in our November meeting when we requested to, uh, work on the Franklin Academy, and we said that some of the things were underlying, if we wanted to get it done before the bicentennial, that was one of the things he talked about, is that they wouldn't know until they got underneath some of the, um, the wood, uh, damage on the property to be able to fix it.
Okay, and, and the only question I have on that is now that we are about a month out from the bicentennial, they're not going to start tearing off wood and stuff if the board elected to move forward, correct?
No, I would, I would say after the bicentennial, uh, we could schedule it after that and get it started.
Yeah, most of the things for Franklin, if we didn't move on in November, um, I know I discussed trying to request move forward, it just would not be done before the things on this list, for the most part, outside of the pressure washing.
Right, okay, and then the painting at Franklin, Cook Development LLC, and that's the twenty-five thousand dollars, and is that the total building being painted, or just the front?
That would be the Highway forty-five side across the front and down the east side to the back.
On the playground side there?
Yes, sir.
But not the very back of the building that faces Magnolia Bowl?
Just what they're going to replace, uh, the woodwork around the front.
Okay.
The front and both sides.
Okay, and then the last.
Question real quick, can I ask a question real quick?
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Alright, so number nine and number ten, for Franklin, the, uh, woodwork, the trim will be done, is recommended Jay Morgan Company, and Cook Development is the one that's recommended to paint it once it's up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Then the athletic, uh, complex lighting, heard about, uh, that's been proposed. And Cook Development is the one that's recommended to paint it once it's up. Uh, Mr. Little, would you go back in and just explain the two options, I know there's rewire or replace. Board, just before he goes into the different things, are we thinking we want it to be rewired or replaced?
If the current post.
No, simple, oh, go ahead.
Is that Mr. Spark?
I was saying if the current posts, um, that are being used are still in good shape and you can rewire it, I don't see why, why would, why we would need to, you know, purchase new posts.
I don't think it's a post, isn't it the?
Yes, it's just a ballast.
It's just the lights.
Yeah, just the lights up on the top of the, the posts.
So, is the, well, in the last minute, my understanding was that the, um, the lighting, the lighting was outdated or needed to be upgraded or something like that with the candles, am I right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, that's it about the lighting.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about the candles being the lighting, not the post themselves.
Right.
I think that's why, I think he clarified, is that correct, Mr. Little, that the candles you're referring to is the actual lights up on the, um, that we're looking to bring down or replace, not the actual poles that are set behind the.
No, sir, the.
Rest on.
The poles, the poles are fine, uh, what they would do is they would come in and take, if we decided to go with LED lights, they would come in and take all the lights down, uh, and they have rails that the lights mount to that would go up there. There would just be a little modification to the poles on the very top, and they would run new wiring all the way down to a breaker panel that they would set inside a little gate right there at the bottom of the poles.
Okay.
Now, the poles are fine, we can use the poles we have.
Mr. Little, did you say that it, it's, it would be difficult to replace the, I'm going to use the bulbs? So if we just rewired it, that wouldn't make any sense.
Well, what it is, is the light, the lights that are up there are pretty much what they say, they're hard to get parts for them. It's starting to get hard to find the light bulbs, to find the, uh, ballasts and all that for them. Uh, I guess you'd call them, they're getting outdated.
Yeah.
Not many of them, uh, there anymore. We went in last year and fixed all the bulbs, had somebody climb the poles, fix all the bulbs and everything, and as you see, this, that's when we found out that the wiring was as bad as it was because they took pictures and sent them to me. Uh, so we had several companies that, uh, came and gave bids on just strictly rewiring and fixing the lights once again that have already gone out since last year. But the wiring is, is real bad on near about every pole. So we, you know, if you wanted to rewire it, uh, we could have it rewired and have, that would be rewiring from the light to the junction box that's up on the top, and then from the junction box all the way down the pole to the breaker panel. And we would just fix the lights that are not working right now.
Now, if you rewire it and we continue to use the vintage bulbs, would you have to rewire it again to accommodate LED in the future?
When, when you go to LED like this package that, um, that we were looking at, it comes already wired. It's everything from the lights, the wire that comes all the way down, uh, and they will actually take another panel box and set it on the ground, and that's where all of your ballast and all your, uh, equipment is going to be down there. The only we, reason you would have to go up to the top is if a bulb, you know, or a light went bad. Uh, if a ballast goes bad, you do all that from the ground. There'd be probably nobody climbing the poles for several more years.
Okay, so board, what's, uh, your thoughts on whether to rewire or replace?
Do we have a price that we can look at for a rewire and a price we can look at for replace? I'm looking at the quotes that we were, we were given.
I had, uh, the quotes last year for rewiring, I had three of them, and they ranged from thirty-seven thousand to, uh, I think the next bid was around forty-two thousand, and then the other one was about sixty-five thousand to, to strictly just rewire.
But to do both, it's the two hundred and thirty thousand plus, is that it?
Yes, ma'am, that would be, that would go for LED lights, and that would be a complete new lights, new wires, breakers, everything would be brand new on the poles.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
They've removed any of the old wiring and everything from the, the poles and everything in doing that installation, correct?
Yes, yes, everything, you know, they'd take every, all the old out and come back with new.
And not put it under the bleacher?
Uh.
No, oh, no, no, I got you, I got you, no, no, that's not going to happen. That took me a second, but I got it.
Yeah, that was off the grid.
Now, is there anything else that would, I mean, if we went for two hundred and thirty thousand, I just want to make sure if nothing else that would supersede the lighting, is there anything else that's super important? That's, that's your list, uh, of the eleven most important things in the district?
Well, no, that's not my list, that's the list that y'all created on tier one. There are some things in tier two that are student oriented, that if we, if we were going to go into tier two, that would, that would be a priority. This list is based from what the board requested. We, the priority was, was based by, based on what my recommendation was, based on student safety and other issues, but this is a list that was given to us by, by tier one from the board, and then we worked there.
Okay, from tier one.
Right.
Alright, let me ask a question, uh, fellow board members, Dr. Labott, and especially Mr. Little. Uh, Mr. Little, when we, when we did the walkthrough, and, uh, I mentioned this to Mr. Spears back here, I think, before the holidays, but, uh, when we did that out at the, uh, Field House, we never go inside the Field, Field House. And at that time, uh, I was speaking with, uh, some people that, that was in and out of there, you know, serving and stuff, and they mentioned that about that carpeting needing replaced pretty bad. And the other that I would like for us to look at, I don't know if it'd be added to this list or tier two, but the central office itself, our home, uh, as far as the landscaping, the district side, uh, I think it was mentioned about power washing and maybe restriping the parking lot. And I'm not saying put this on a priority list, but I'm asking if we can add these items to our overall list.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think we can continue to add things to the, to the list, there's no, no problem with that. Um, I don't have it, I mean, I don't have it here with me, um, because I saved it, the computer that's there at the, the district that Saturday that we all got together and stuff, and I can pull up the email, but I think we could come together, and that may be something that we talk about at our, uh, meeting, we can put a part of it after we finish our evaluations on the twenty-third, um, that, that we could talk about any of those additional, um.
Okay, I think I'm all printed out, I'll bring it all with me.
Yes, ma'am. So do we want to hold off on the athletic complex lighting and consider the other ten projects at this point?
That would be.
Ma'am?
I would like that, yeah.
Okay, alright, uh, what about you? Hold off on number eleven, is that okay with Mr. Sparks and Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so we go back to the top, and we have the ten items that we just reviewed through, we're not including item, the last item. Uh, couple of things, uh, that we need to consider here is the funding source. We have our eleven twenty-one, uh, capital improvement plan, because we're doing work there at Franklin, uh, we can use our sixteenth section funds, and I checked Mr. Dunn earlier just to verify that point. So I would say that we would want to use sixteenth section funds for some of these projects, like the playground equipment, it's twenty-five thousand dollars here, uh, the vets washing, uh, there, and I think there's one more, but I'll have to check because I'm not looking at the, um, fund balance, we may not have fully enough to do the painting part of it here. Uh, but we could still take that.
What code is it for the fund balance, Mr. Spears, that you're trying to find?
Um. It's Fund eighteen forty.
Yes, Fund eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
What's the balance as of our December financial?
Eighteen forty, I'm looking at it, fifty-two?
Fifty-two thousand?
Fifty-two thousand five sixty-eight fifty-four. Fifty-two thousand, five sixty-eight, fifty-four.
Okay, so twenty-five thousand for the painting and twenty-five thousand, so that's gonna be right at a hundred percent of using that funds for the equipment and the painting.
Yeah.
So, you know, it'd be my recommendation that we, and of course, that's replenished through the rents and special assessments that we receive from the sixteenth section property. So it would be my recommendation when we approve it, that we approve using funds from Fund eighteen-forty to pay for those two projects, which is project number four and project number, uh, let's see, ten?
Ten and four?
Yes, ten and four, um, sixteenth section funds. And then the remaining items, uh, there, the other eight items, uh, that are listed, if the board wishes to approve them all, would come out of Fund, um, eleven-twenty-one.
Eleven-one. Eleven-twenty-one, or is that what you say?
Eleven-twenty-one, yes, our capital improvement fund. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
Fine with me, Cox.
Um, Ms. Young, Mr. Sparks, Dr. Schumay?
Um.
Yes.
Yes, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, but there's also a Franklin that's the, that pressure washing for twenty-six-hundred-fifty. Would that not be?
Right, well, it's just that, um, I don't think we have enough fund balance there to cover this additional amount. And so that's why I was just saying we would just put that one toward eleven-twenty-one.
Okay.
And then we'll see it. We continue to collect those rents from sixteenth section funds.
Okay.
So, um, so is everyone good with the ten items listed here to kinda get them in action from the intercom system all the way down to the, uh, painting?
Yeah.
All right, so if that's, okay, so I need a motion to approve the ten items here for the capital improvements, uh, the two items for Franklin, uh, being, um, the playground equipment and the painting of, uh, Franklin to come out of Fund eleven, I mean eighteen-forty, and the remaining eight projects to be funded from eleven-twenty-one. So do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
It's been motioned by Ms. Cox, seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, here, no discussion, um, we'll vote by voice vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumay, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote? Mr. Spark?
Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is, animals. All right, and then we can, next month come with our next line of options that will continue this, uh, effort.
Yeah, Mr. Spears, I also wanted to recommend to the board that they really, they read the COVID relief funding for facilities for K-12 education. Um, and some of our tier-two, um, priorities that was recommended by the board trustees include HVAC, windows and doors to mitigate COVID-nineteen. And so if you read that information prior to your board retreat, it'll help you prioritize because we should be receiving fun, funding from, um, the government to mitigate and deal with those, um, capital, um, requests.
Could you, could you send us possibly a summary of some of those specific ones that you've identified that would fit in that category so that as we have a, uh, discussion that we can make sure that those are, you know, identified properly?
So, so we don't have a lot of the details outside of HVAC doors and windows, so I'm just thinking about the windows at, at Franklin that was identified. I'll send you all the list for the tier-two, because as y'all worked through the list, and you all can, can identify which ones that you want to recommend. But the only reason I'm giving you that is because it may be something that you may wanna do later because the, the COVID funds may cover that.
Okay, perfect.
You thought I was saying, so I'll send the list of things, and so as you look at the list, you can say, we may not need to use eleven-twenty-one for this because the COVID-nineteen relief package, stimulus package may cover the windows and doors at Franklin, the windows and doors at this particular facility. Are y'all with me?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me make a note of that, fine.
Thank you.
And I'll send, and I'll, if you want me to send you the information regarding the stimulus package, I can send you that information.
Yes, please, and I'll make sure we have it at our meeting. Okay, all right. Or, or if you could just have Ms., uh, Woodard attach it to our information for that meeting, that would be the best, uh, place to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next we go to number three, which is the Hunt Campus Recovery, uh, Review of Expenditures Reimbursement, uh, Payment Projects, and so we have Taylor with us this evening, good evening, and, uh, you'd like to present?
Uh, since I was there at the Hunt School this afternoon for, for a while, uh, the, the roofing is ninety-nine percent finished. I was hoping to do a, uh, an inspection, a punch inspection on the roof today, but with three inches of snow on the roof, it wasn't a good day to do the inspection. I, I did do a punch list for the asbestos abatement, that project is finished, and they have, uh, demobilized, and so that, they have cleaned up, so they, uh, a lot of the, uh, debris on the floors that was left by, uh, by the initial, by Weatherby, uh, has been cleaned up. So now, we also, uh, uh, so now the floors are clean, the school's clean, and it looks like a whole new place there. Um, also got the roofing contractor, uh, to take off the plywood that Weatherby had put up there, so now we can, now we have sunlight in the building and, and some ventilation with overhangs. There's no issues with, with the rain getting in, so now that the, the roofs repaired. So now we can, we can have ventilation. There was issues with, with mold and mildew with those buildings being all, all, all shut up, no ventilation, and the roof leaking. So now we have ventilation, and the roof roofs are fully, fully, uh, uh, everything's been re-roofed, so everything is taking progress. We'd like to, Dr. Labott, probably present to the board, uh, at the next board meeting, I believe February eighth, uh, with the final drawings and specifications, uh, to, to advertise. So we'd like to maybe have a workshop before that board meeting, uh, Mr. Spears, uh, with the board, and, and update you on the progress on, 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 on the, on, on, on the, on the final, on the final, final, uh, pa, 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 package, uh, in February.
Is that something we could do at our, uh, review meeting that, uh?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Uh, not that day, but I'm talking about the, uh, Wednesday before our meeting.
Right, exactly, yeah, that'd be the best time to do that.
Okay.
All right. We'll work together on, uh, making sure we get all those details pulled together.
Yeah, so, so, so pretty much, so, so in summary, the, the roofing project i- is, is ninety-nine percent finished. I just, I just need to do a final inspection on it, uh, and the asbestos is also complete. So both those projects are complete, uh, and no change orders. In fact, we'll probably have a, we'll probably have deducted change orders. We had a little bit of contingency in each one, and we didn't use it, so we will have actually kept my money, money coming back to the district on, on, on both of those, uh, on all of those contracts.
That's great news.
That is good news.
We have auditors finding us money, we have architects finding us money, that's just, that's just great to hear.
But everything looks good, though, it really, really is, even though it was that nasty day today, the, the school, with, 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 with the, with the plywood off of it, and, and the sun right in there, and everything cleaned out, it really looks good.
That's great.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the plywood being off, is the building secure? I'm, I'm sort of unclear when you say air is coming through.
The, the building, you know, we, we do have the fence all, 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 all the way around. Uh, we did secure it, locked up. The, the windows that, that, that were, uh, that tornado got were on the second floor, so, so the first floor, all the windows are intact there, so, so, yeah, yes, if, if somebody wants to climb up, you know, they can, but, uh, but, but the buil-, building is secured, is very, very much secured.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, now we have our, uh, recovery report here that, uh, Ms. Rogers had put together for us. Uh, does anyone have any questions about, uh, the money market or any of the other fund balances um, in this report, or the charges? Okay?
Nope.
All right. So next we go to contract renewals update. Uh, we have our contract renewals here, you see some, uh, different, um, I think there's one on here that we just approved update, um, maybe the postage meter. So that will be updated on our report going forward. There are several others that you can see are multi-year, uh, contracts, and then there are others like insurance and other types of services that the district's re, uh, receiving that end, I believe at the end of the school year, or different times during the year. But is there any questions about any of the, uh, contracts that's presented?
Uh, I just wanted to say, from the board perspective, I'm glad that we created this list and look at it annually, um, and be able to really look at, at bidding out some of these things and having a conscious list. I know that's something that was requested about, uh, a year ago, um, and I would just say, um, our CFO has done a great job of, of, of articulating that in a document and getting it to you all, but I think it's a great way for us to be fair about the process. So I really appreciate the initiative of the board to have a contract list on the monthly agenda.
Thank you very much, Dr. Labott.
Quick question.
Yes, Ms. Young.
Uh, is this, um, correct with Dr. Page? Is she on, right, is that correct?
Um, looking here, there's the Curriculum Associates that's for the iReady program, and then looking down, I think there's another part down on the second page here, uh, if I remember correctly.
Keep going back up, it's on the first page.
Oh, it's on the first page, I'm sorry, I overlooked it there.
There it is.
Yes.
It's just for this fiscal year?
Yes. Sorry. It goes through, uh, from, uh, May thirteenth of this year, of twenty-twenty, excuse me, through June thirtieth of this year, and that was for her professional services, part-time sped education, and Title I support services. And I know we hired a new permanent, uh, full-time, uh, Special Education Director, um, back, uh, this past, uh, year, Ms., is it Ms. Lanier or Dr. Lanier?
Ms., Ms. Lanier, we hope Dr. Lanier soon.
That's great. That's great.
And the, I think, the reason why she's on there twice, I think Ms., um, Ms. Cox asked this question earlier on the contract list. What happened is in twenty-twenty-one, she was with Curriculum Associates, and she was helping us implement our iReady. And so she's there from the twenty-twenty-one school year, it should be, I think, nineteen-twenty instead of twenty-twenty-one, towards the end of that year. And she did some contractual services when she was with Curriculum Associates, and then we hired her independently when she stopped working for Curriculum Associate for federal programs and other, and, um, sped. So I think the years are, are, are wrong on that one, but that's the reason why it's on the contractual list. But I think Ms. Cox asked that question about, um, four or five months ago.
Are you talking about this particular entry?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go back and research that, and if, if we need to take that off, we will. Okay, and it, it's not, it's not that she didn't do it, it's the time period. Yeah, I think it was the nineteen-twenty school year, and then after that, she started, started with us.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
It looks like it's simultaneous, and it's not, that's what I'm trying to.
Sure.
Make sure.
And, and, you know, obviously, we see, uh, at the end of this year, six-thirty, you know, you have, uh, this particular, um, entry listed here from Ms. Page, and then you have the Galloway Chandler McKinney Insurance that'll need to be, uh, you know, uh, posted out so that we can take in different, uh, vendors for those insurance, and then we have some mid, what I consider mid-year, I mean, we've already started the year for these two insurances here, that would also have to be, uh, done, but that'll be as we get on into this year, actually into the next school year. So, uh, any other questions?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make a comment that the one for the school insurance that begins on July first, I'll present it to the board, a request to advertise to accept bidding on that probably in April. So we have the month of April and May to get in any kind of bids and answer questions for vendors, and it'll be presented to the board no later than the regular June meeting to begin July first.
That's right, so that way we can, you know, get as many, um, people presenting to see what kind of pricing that we can get in those particular, uh, products that.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so next we go down to, uh, the bicentennial planning for Franklin Academy. Um, I know, I, uh, it was, we had a very productive meeting at our last one. I know we got, went through a lot of different, uh, discussion about the upcoming, kinda fine tuning every little thing. Uh, did everyone receive a copy of the guest list? I know that was one of the questions that had been posed about the guest list that had been, or invitations where they had been sent?
Uh, yeah, I did.
Okay, yeah, I think they were all emailed out. Um, and of course, uh, I have, uh, sent everything to, um, Senator Younger and also Trent Kelly's office, uh, for the U.S., uh, Representatives. Uh, then also, uh, I'm still trying to get someone, I haven't been able to connect with, um, Representative Kabir Kareem. Uh, may end up having to, uh, turn and reach out to, um, uh, Ms. McLean uh, about the proclamation for, um, the, the House, the State House, I'm sorry, Mississippi House of Representatives. And, um, it was my understanding from Senator Younger, uh, when I discussed with him that, um, Delbert Hoesman was going to be attending, and my also discussion, uh, with, uh, the representative from, uh, Trent Kelly's office is that they're working very, uh, hard to allow him the opportunity, free his schedule up to where he can attend as well to the bicentennial, but that's still kinda up in the air, and we'll hopefully know some of those details soon. Uh, of course, once we get the mock-up on the monument, it'll be very similar to what was put over at Union with the exception of obviously the timeline and some other wording. Um, but once that mock-up is sent to, to me to pass in the committee, I'll also send it on to everyone, the trustees here to review it as well. Um, Dr. Labott, Ms. Young, do y'all have anything you'd like to add, uh, with respect to the bicentennial?
I just wanted to commend it, it's been a total team effort, um, um, as far as the preparation for the bicentennial, and we will have another commemorating, um, activity with the eighth of May that's going to be more student oriented. And we hope by that time, I spoke with Dr. Dobbs and the state superintendent, um, today about the vaccination rollout, that things will be in a better situation, so we will be able to have students. But it's been a total team effort, and I appreciate, uh, the CMSD team who's worked diligently, um, and the, um, the, uh, the overall bicentennial team who's worked really hard to make sure this is successful. So, um, we still have a, the finish line, we're praying for good weather, but doing the things we need to do to get prepared, and, um, just wanted to let everybody know that's on the committee, um, that's listening, um, thank you very much.
That's right, and, uh, Dr. Browning and everyone's been working very hard on getting, um, the different student, uh, uh, participation pulled together, uh, along with Mr. Chapman, and, uh, we appreciate that. And, and Dr. Black, do you wanna keep it sealed, or do you wanna share with respect to the Air Force Base what they said?
No, I, I don't like doing anything until it happens, so we'll wait and keep working hard as a team, and then everybody, just to make sure they attend, and it's gonna be a great celebration. We'll continue to work hard as a team to get, get this done, but it's a lot of great people behind us. Um, I think, I think the most, um, humbling thing is that how much community support we've gotten. I hadn't mentioned those names. I pray I have time to be able to thank those people in the community that have worked hard, who worked through holidays to work with us and make sure some of these things are done outside of our, um, our district family, um, that have been very, just, just very good to us and, and making sure that this is a, a great event.
Excellent.
And I got my station.
All right, look at that.
Isn't it pretty?
Yes, it's very classy.
Right.
That's awesome.
On the committee, we call that shiny, don't we, Doc, Mr. Spears?
That's right, we call it shiny.
Okay, it's very shiny.
All right, uh, Ms. Young, would you, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Uh, no, not at this time, I just think that, um, it's been a great experience pulling everything together. I wasn't able to make the last meeting, um, but I, I, overall it's been good, and I can see everything coming together really well, and, um, very grateful for, um, the wonderful staff at CMSD.
Absolutely. All right, next we'll go to our consent agenda. Uh, we have our policies, uh, that were, um, up for consideration there, uh, policy BDB. I'm sorry, um, uh, the new policies that are presented there, IDDFAA and, uh, JRAF. Then we have our dates to remember, uh, will be out for January the eighteenth, uh, February the fourth, progress reports are issued, and February the fifteenth, we'll be out for President's Day. Then we have our athletic dates to remember for the high school basketball, middle school basketball, high school soccer. And then we come down to our upcoming board meetings, uh, which we have January the twenty-third, we'll have our retreat at Brandon, uh, to do our evaluations and other business. Uh, then we have February the third, our review meeting on teams, and February the eighth, which will be our regular scheduled meeting back at Brandon. Uh, then we have donations from Heritage Academy Social Club donation to Cook Elementary. Uh, we have a donation from, uh, St. James United Methodist Church to Columbus Middle School Honor Roll Students, and consideration, uh, for a donation. honor roll students, and consideration for a donation from the Rotary Club to Franklin Academy. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second? I'll make the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All in favor by voice vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote? I think I heard yes there.
Yeah, it was a whisper, but it was the.
All right. I'll vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next, we go to open forum. Do we have anyone, Ms. Wood, that's signed up for open forum? Or anyone on the meeting that has signed up for open forum?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So next, we go to Office of Business Management. We have our monthly financial statements, our fund balance report, cash balance report, budget status report, monthly revenue budget report, monthly expenditure budget report, certification and summary of reconciled bank statements. Board, I need a motion to approve the financials.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumake. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion? Okay. We'll do by voice vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next, we go to our monthly ad valorem tax collection analysis. Board, is there any questions about the tax collections?
Just one.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, are we about where we're supposed to be? I know that's sort of vague. Not too far behind where we were last year. I just, you know.
Not too far behind where we were last year. This very first report that Mr. Spears has brought up, I wrote at the top that it was a correction to November 2020. And I have asterisks under November on the regular ad valorem collection. And also on the second page, it's for the GO bonds, I believe. Yes. Those two, there was some showing in one and not enough in the other. So I've corrected it for November, and it is reflected in December's report. If you go down to the next one for December. Right now, if you look at the right side of the page, you can see our collection. Right now, we're 128, 449 under where we were this time last year.
Okay.
Which we knew, we knew that that was gonna, that that was gonna happen, especially right now, coming out of COVID. And this is the time of the year that we do collect less than we do at any other time in the school year. So hopefully, we'll pick this back up during collection times. But it's, it's just so uncertain.
Okay.
You know, I hate that. I know I brag on our employees a lot, but it's a team effort. But I think that subsidately, from a, from a logistics standpoint, that Holly's done a great job of making the budget information very plain and easy to understand for all board members and for a layman's person, and especially for me. And so I appreciate some of these reports in detail that you guys can ask detailed questions. And she has a deep conceptual understanding of what's happening here as it relates to ad valorem taxes. She's going to do the ESSA report, some other things. And when we get close to get to her report, but she's made things very easy for us to understand. And just wanted to commend her for her efforts.
Absolutely.
And silly question. What is March? What is HS? Sorry.
That is Homestead.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
We get a Homestead exemption two times a year. And I wanted to keep that separate because it's actually, if you look at our revenue reports, it's under a different revenue line as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the ad valorem tax collections? All right. Now we go to our fund balance trends as of December the 31st, 2020. Any questions regarding this particular report?
Okay.
All right. Now we go to our bank cash, sorry, bank cash balance yearly comparison. Any questions on this report? Okay.
I do just want to point out, if you go back up to the very top and you look at our district maintenance account, where we were this time last year, we're $2.6 million above that in our banking account. I know, I know that COVID had some to do with that because of programs that we did not finish the school year with. But I think that is also a reflection of how closely the board monitors us.
It's a good thing to end up on that side of.
Yeah. Yes, it's a very good thing.
All right. Any other questions on the bank cash report? Okay. Athletic events report? Any questions on athletic events report? Okay. Next, we go down to fixed asset, I'm sorry, budget amendments as of January the 5th, 2021. And I think we reviewed over these the other day, and we saw $630,000 that's just going to be set aside.
Yes, sir.
Um, and so of course, that money, if, if it's not repurposed, then of course, we would be able to harvest that back to our fund balance, correct?
It's according to how we end the year with. And I say that because we wrote the budget to overspend.
Right.
Okay.
So we may end up breaking even, or we may end up being able to put money in our fund balance. This is a very large, large chunk of it.
And so you, just to clarify, you wrote the budget to overspend?
Yeah, that means that we wrote that we were going to have more expenditures than we anticipated revenue.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget amendments? All right. So I need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All in favor, please by, vote by voice. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is approved. It is unanimous. Now we go to consideration discussion, fixed asset disposals. Board, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Was that seconded by Dr. Schumake?
Uh, yes.
Seconded by Dr. Schumake. Any discussions? Okay, hearing no discussions. All in favor, Dr. Schum, I'm sorry, Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I voted yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to our ESSA report. Board, is there any questions regarding the ESSA report, annual ESSA report? Dr. Labott, would you like to elaborate on this report?
I'm going to allow the CFO to do that. She created a document.
I did.
Rogers.
I like the colors.
A lot of purple.
I wanted you to be able to see which school is, is doing what. And if you look down in the descriptions, I show that column number four and column 12 are two columns that I added in. Everything else is something that is published by the state. I added those two columns in so you can see in column four, that is each school's particular percentage of enrollment. In the very last column, column 12, if you take out all the excluded items, which is all of our child nutrition, it's all of our debt payments, it's all of our transfers in and out. If you take that number away, and you only have the expenditures that are left, that column 12 shows the expenditure percentage by each school. There are different reasons why, like Stokes Beard is the very first one. It's location eight. It's 11% of enrollment, and they spent 11% allowable items. The high school is next with 27%, and they spent 30%. There are different programs that McKeller goes into the high school. They have different students in private placement. That is an additional expenditure there. The middle school is 24 and 22%. They're very, very close. And that's pretty much saying that we're spending our eligible funds where our students are.
Great.
That is great. That is great there. Any other questions on this report, Board? Comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the description at the bottom, that's, that is something that I created. That's not anything that you're going to see from the state. I just wanted you to be able to look at it and know exactly what each column refers to and what it stands for. When this is, when this is published by the state, you'll only get the chart minus column four and column 12.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't believe there's any action required on that, Ms. Rogers. Is that correct?
No, sir. I just wanted the board to be informed in case any, any of the community questions. And, and so you'll be prepared.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Board. Now we have the claims docket. Any motion to pay the claims docket?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Sparks, I heard him do the motion. Who did the second?
I guess I did.
All right, Dr. Schumake made the second. Any discussion?
I do have just a comment.
Okay.
Okay. I noticed that we paid our chamber membership dues this time. And I didn't, I mean, I'm pretty sure you're aware, but there's, if, if we're, if we're members, we can hop onto their, I think it's a weekly blast email that goes out. So, you know, if we've got something, I don't exactly know how it works, but since we're members, we can utilize that to reach out to the public. And it's, it's a week, I think it's a weekly thing. Just a thought.
I'll think about that for bicentennial, the committee. I'll write it down, that closer to time, we may, may be able to utilize. I didn't know that. That was a reoccurring cost when I came aboard that we were members of the chamber. So I'll, I'll make sure we keep that in mind for our committee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've ever used it, but it, it's, we pay, I mean, when we pay our dues, that's one of our perks. So it could be used throughout the year for various and sundry things if we, if we wanted to. And Wilson should be able to tell you how that, how, what you need to send in.
Good idea.
Yeah, it is a very good idea.
Obviously, touching every way we can in the community, all different mediums is certain way to, you know, spread the news, marketing, everything.
Right. And the other, the other question I had, there was, we paid for a commercial dispatch VIP marketing plan. Just curious what that is, because I've been seeing a lot of ads in the paper, which I think is great. I didn't know if that was part of it or not.
The dispatch.
Uh, yeah. Mm-hmm. Right.
Uh, we decided to get, to go with that advertising early in a year to help us with communication due to COVID-19. And it's worked to our benefit. We sometimes run out of things to put in there on our weekly ads, but it's just part of us improving communication for the district during COVID-19. So we're excited to be able to do it because it's, it's assisted us with registration, it's assisted us with changes. It's helped us to celebrate some of the successes in the district from our employees to our students, to our prior students. And so we felt like it was a good investment on behalf of the district. You know, another great thing about it, I'm not on the internet, but they, they also do web internet traction. And, and they send us a nice report. So it's been good for the district as a whole.
Yeah, I love the, the congratulations to Robert Woodard II. Those were nice. The Union Academy celebration, the bicentennial. So I, I like seeing, seeing those ads in the paper.
Yeah, we, we had a coach of the year with, uh, uh, our girls' basketball team, was able to put our basketball team. So it just helps us to celebrate some of that marketing things that we don't have anybody internally to do that, to get it out there to the public.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cox, you said you had a question?
No, that's okay. I'm good.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments, excuse me, on the docket? All right. So now we'll move to the vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yay.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to our federal programs, IDA monthly financial review as of December 31st. Board, do you have any questions about this report? Okay. So next, we go to our Office Superintendent, Dr. Labott, Superintendent Travel, any travel you'd like to report?
No.
Okay. Superintendent Updates and Reports, Dr. Labott, any reports or updates?
No.
All right. Superintendent Recommendations, we have our approval for the 2021, 2020, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021 Supplement Additional Duties by Human Resources. Board, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox, seconded by Dr. Schumake. Or Ms. Young? I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Young, seconded by Dr. Schumake. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes. Let me close my door. Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next, we go to consideration discussion of approved staff personnel items. Board, we have the items here before us. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. All right. So next, we go to our, let's see, consideration to approve addition of two maintenance positions. And this is what we discussed in our, the budget amendments that we made with respect to the salaries that would be covered through the end of this year. And then obviously, when that budget is put together to, you know, review for the upcoming year and help Mr. Little's department there. So Board, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Has seconded by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by voice vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote? Mr. Spark? I think we lost Mr. Spark.
Uh-oh.
Yes.
Okay, he votes yes. I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to consideration discussion, advertised ground maintenance, which is bid 668. And as you can see here, what's been presented by Dr. Labott from Mr. Little is to advertise for the maintenance for these particular locations, Columbus High School, McKeller Campus, Columbus Middle School Campus, and Stokes Beard Elementary Campus. And just to verify, Dr. Labott or Mr. Little, those are the only camps that should be on this bid, correct?
That's correct. And, and Mr. Little probably can just verify this is from the capital improvement tour that the board initiated and took. And we felt like that would be And we felt like that would be great for us to be able to do some of those things internally. But some of the bigger campuses that we would, we would outsource those, those bigger campuses in order to assist with, um, um, keeping the facilities maintained. Mr. Little?
Yes, I, I believe, um, those three right there, I think we can handle the rest of it. They kept up somewhat last year, but those right there, I think we get those, um, bid it out. I think we'll be able to handle the rest and keep the rest of it up real good.
All right. All right. So, board, I need a motion to approve advertised bid.
So move.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Cox. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Young. I'm sorry.
We had mentioned that in the bid process that, that it would be laid out as far as the landscaping and, you know, the towers and that type of thing. Would those items be on the bid or how specific are we going to be?
Uh, we would detail the scope of work in detail, um, with the bid process, Mr. Little. And when we discussed some of the things that you all gave, gave us during your capital improvement walk to make sure that those things will be outlined. Mr. Little?
They will. It'll, it'll be the grass cutting, the, for the flower, the flowers, the mulching and all that will be put in, uh, to that one bid for each school.
Okay.
Uh, and also, uh, Ms. Young, I just again wanted to just commend, uh, Mr. Little on his hard work. I wear him out with the bicentennial and everything else on my to-do list. So, um, I, I know that, um, some of this stuff looks easy, but it's a lot of hard work, a lot of things from behind the scenes with the Columbus Municipal School District faculty and staff, making sure these things are done and done well and, um, and done professionally. So I just want to commend Mr. Little for his continued hard work to get this information to the board of trustees so that we can diligently work on improving our facilities throughout the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments on this item? All right. So I need a motion to, uh, I've already got the motion and the second. Uh, Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote? Mr. Spark?
Yes.
All right. I vote yes. And Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next we go to consideration discussion to approve MOU between CMSD and Bellhaven University School Partnership Field Intern Placement Experiences. Board, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Has been motioned by Ms. Young. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Doc, I mean, um, Ms. Cox. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Now we go to, uh, consideration discussion, uh, to approve FF-CRA benefits for CMSD employees. Uh, board, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
So.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumake. Uh, Mr. Sparks, are you making the second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sparks made the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Uh, Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Uh, next we go to number seven, discussion to approve fundraising purchase in the amount of $10,000 for rebranding merchandise. Uh, this is what was discussed in our Wednesday meeting about, uh, the board setting up and putting money aside so that we can go ahead and kickstart the merchandising effort, rebranding, uh, within the district. So, uh, this, uh, funds would come from fund 1121, uh, to go to, to, uh, fund this out of our capital improvement savings fund, um, if approved. So board, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by Ms., uh, Dr., I'm sorry, that's, um, Mr. Sparks.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Sparks made the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Uh, Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Who made, who made, who made the motion, please?
Ms. Cox made the motion and, uh, Mr. Sparks made the second.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Um, so Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Uh, now we have consideration discussion to, uh, approve rental agreement between CMSD and Pitney Bowes. Uh, board, I need a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah. So move.
Has been motioned by Ms. Cox. I'll make the second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next we come down to, let me get this up here. All right, move it down there. Consideration discuss, uh, to approve advertisement in the, uh, commercial dispatch per MDE announcing community eligibility provision to all enrolled students for child nutrition, submitted by child nutrition. Board, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Has been motioned by Dr. Schumake. I'll make the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. 10 is consideration discussion to approve advertisement in the Colum, uh, commercial dispatch for the destruction of special education and spirit records prior to January 2015. Board, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Has been motioned by Mr. Sparks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Has been seconded by, uh, Ms. Cox.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All in favor, voice vote. Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Next we come to item 11, discussion of CMSD exit survey. Uh, this was submitted by a trustee for discussion. Um, Dr. Labott or Mr. Hunley, I think we're taking over, uh, putting that together for the district.
Yes. Um, Mr. Hunley and, um, Dr. Dito and Holly, um, have worked diligently for us to, um, to complete our exit survey. We will run it through Mr. Dunn and Mr. Hemfield to make sure that we're not interfering with any due processes or asking any discriminatory questions that may, um, put us in future litigation. So after we're completed with the survey, we will give that over to Mr. Dunn and Mr. Hemfield this week and then move forward with, with taking the exit survey. Are there any other questions?
Will the board have an, uh, an opportunity to view this once it's completed?
Uh, the survey?
Yes, ma'am. The exit survey, the document itself.
Oh, document. Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
Oh, okay. That's it. Yeah, I don't want to see the survey, survey. I mean, once, once the document is completed.
Right.
Okay.
That's not a problem. We're going to run it through Mr. Dunn and Mr. Hemfield and then we'll, uh, put it in, uh, we'll email it to you all.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other questions on this item? All right. So next we move to item, uh, number 12. Uh, 12-1 is student attendance report. Board, is there any questions about the, uh, student attendance report? I mean, the one question that I have is, when we start looking at Franklin Academy, do we know why? I mean, it's, I guess the question is, you know, I know there's a lot of red at different places here, sale and others, but why there's more red in this particular category or in sale versus what, you know, at Stokes?
Um, I, I'll definitely, uh, look into that, but I can tell you that they've had a lot more cases in, um, quarantines than, than most schools as far as COVID-19.
Okay.
We'll check into that.
Board members, are there any other questions on this report?
Um, this may not be exactly the right place, but, you know, I think you sent us an article and so did Lisa, same article on the 23,000 missing students in Mississippi. Do we have any idea how many missing students we have?
We don't know how many missing students we have. We just know that our enrollment numbers are, have shifted by, um, 152. Um, and it varies from month to month to, uh, 200 students. Um, and so in evaluating that article, um, subsequently we, we can say that it, it could be pre-K, it could even be kindergarten, um, due to us not having mandatory kindergarten. Uh, we've had high school students to trickle in little by little from the March to May situation. And so, um, and dealing with some of those critical needs, um, and, and merging into, uh, the 20 to the 21, um, school year, we just have to be mindful of that from a academic standpoint, that some of those students will trickle in. And we just call them, you know, the, the students, the COVID students that, that really from March to May never came back to school. Um, you know, at the high school level, we had a hard time with kids that were employed. Um, and, and because we have students of poverty, you know, um, combating work in school. Um, but, uh, I've learned from my colleagues throughout the state that we're not the only people that are experiencing some of these, uh, situations. And so we'll just continue to monitor the situation and prioritize making sure that we, we focus on, um, our enrollment trends and, and getting our students back in school. So we can't say, um, definitively that they are or where they are, but I can tell you that, that the gamut is, is, is pre-K to, um, 12 as far as those numbers.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, if we knew, say, I don't know, I make up a name. John Brown was in the fourth grade last year and then he doesn't appear on any roles this year. Is there any way to follow up to find out, you know, students that were there? I mean, I realize there's a whole panoply of things that could, they could have moved, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I just, we just really don't have any way to track. Is that basically the?
Well, I can tell you, um, uh, that we diligently worked on that from March to May and so worked for, on it before registration in August. So principals, little by little, are looking at students that were there before and really working hard to try to make sure that they stay in school. So that's been a part of our mitigation strategy is looking at kids that were there before that have not come back. And so, um, so that's just part of our diligence at the, at the school level to continue to monitor that.
Okay. Thank you.
One, one other question I have on this particular report, kind of looking at the greater than 10 absences, uh, excluding suspensions report we've got here, is do you see a higher number of absences on days students are distance learning versus the days that they're supposed to be in the classroom on campus?
I, I think statistically from the days, I don't think we have as much on days as we have a segment of the population. Like we just have a segment of population that are not consistently coming to school regularly, either virtually or hybrid.
So the students that are showing these numbers and these trends developing, it's universal. It's not something to where they're coming two days, but then they're being absent three days because they're not doing virtual learning for whatever reason it is. Or that they're not coming those two days that they should be on campus and then they're actually tuning in or, or I guess you, you know, coming to school on the other three days that they're virtual. Like you don't see any dividing trends between one being higher than another. There might be a contributing factor like connection or whatever that might have, you know, been a, a part of what was occurring.
Yes, correct. And, and so, um, and that, um, we've, uh, addressed that at our principal PLCs and primarily the issue has been, it's just a segment of population that are not consistently sending their students to school. And we have had the truancy officer involved. Uh, we send letters and we give information and we've just been, um, just diligently working through that process from a, um, compulsory school, um, attendance law perspective.
Okay. All right. So now we come back to our, um, discipline report. Uh, board, is there any questions regarding any of the discipline reports for, uh, individual school or, um, the district as a whole? All right. Now we have the dropout report. Uh, board, is there any questions regarding the dropout report? Okay. Now we go to our safety report. Is there any questions regarding the safety report? Okay. Uh, next we have our COVID-19 update. Dr. Labott, any, any comments you'd like to add to that?
Um, just as the, um, the cases has, um, arisen in the state that we have experienced more quarantines through the exposure from our student and faculty's perspective. Um, I was optimistic and hopeful in talking to Dr. Dobbs and the state superintendent today about the vaccination rollout. Um, there would not be a mandatory vaccination rollout for teachers, but we, for educators, but we will be on the priority list for, um, for frontline workers. Uh, we got a lot of information about the vaccination, the process, the trial and the science behind it that made, made me a lot more confident listening to, um, Dr. Dobbs. And so hopefully in the near future, um, between, um, vaccination and immunity that, um, here in upcoming months, we'll be in a better situation, um, as a community and, and as a state.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for sharing. Any questions about it?
Just one thing. Um, last Friday, when Dr. Dobbs and Dr. Byers did their briefing, there was a question, was anybody else sitting in on that one? Anyway, there was a question whether or not school board members would be wrapped into the schools and the answer was yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, today, today somebody asked if substitute teachers would be wrapped in and they, they said yes, they're going to include, um, um, substitute teachers also.
So for all you young people out there on the board, um, that would be you, Jason, that would be to Lisa, that would be just about everybody but me. Um, yeah. I'm older than you are, Von. I got you. I got you. But, um, anyway, I mean, it, once that's in writing, you might want to, you, you should take advantage of it, I would think.
And I, I will say this, if you have any questions, Dr. Dobbs, I took some, some detailed notes today from the meeting of questions about the vaccination, just give me a call. Um, I will be dispelling that information to our, our, our principals and to our teachers, um, in a manner that I, like I said, talking to them. First of all, I'm going to talk to my parents and making sure they get the vaccination and, um, I'll be taking it also, um, when it's available. Um, he just gave me a lot of confidence about how these trials run and the science behind it and what has happened. And I think that, um, hopefully we'll be able to get a lot of our educators vaccinated in the next couple of months.
Thank you for sharing on that. All right. So next, uh, these next steps here to make sure everybody understands what needs to be done. Uh, you received a second email this afternoon where we will, uh, put this meeting on pause. I think Ms. Woodard or, or someone will keep this meeting open so we can tune back in after we finish executive session. Um, but just be sure that you, uh, switch over to, or in this meeting, even though they'll keep it open and then we'll log back into it to go into, uh, closed determination.
So you log off and log into the other one and then log off of that and come back, log back into this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hope I don't get lost.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, just so that we can make sure, because we're going to be the only ones that are, are going to be able to get on the other meeting for this executive session part. So, uh, so, but I need a motion to go into closed determination.
Oh, God, here we go.
Stay with us, Dr. Schumake. It's one step. I'm going to help you through it, huh?
Let me make sure I get these notes down here so that I can announce, um.
Did we log off yet?
No, don't log off.
Don't log off.
Who made the motion for a close determination?
I think it was Mr.
I did.
Yeah.
All right, so Ms. Cox, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Dr. Schumake, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Young, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, so everyone who's on, we are going to switch over and be back. I'll be back to make the announcement and then, of course, we'll go from there. Thanks, everyone.
Okay.